All right, we are calling to order the meeting of February 27th, 3 o'clock, at the library. Just to mention that we were supposed to have a meeting Monday night, but it was canceled because there were website issues. If anyone wants more information on that, there's windows of time that our website had to be available as the primary posting location for meetings. So that's why Monday night's meeting was canceled. So we've rescheduled a few of those items to today so that we could get them done in a timely manner. The first thing that we're gonna do, other than that announcement, is some other announcements. The Senior Center, St. Patrick's Day Party and Luncheon will be held on Tuesday, March 10th, at the Boston Tavern at 12:00 PM. Doors to open at 11:30. Following luncheon, following lunch, the singing trouper Sergeant Dan Clark will be providing the entertainment. Signups have already begun and will continue until March 4th. No reservations will be accepted after March 4th. The cost of the event is $17 and must be paid upon signup. I'm assuming signups will be at...
The Senior Center.
The Senior Center, COA. One other thing that I wanted to make sure people know is that hands-free driving in Massachusetts began this past weekend. I know that there's been some talk that you can get pulled over for being on your phone, you can't. I checked with the police chief. It is definitely considered a primary offense, which means if a police officer sees you on your phone, you can get pulled over. Hands-free driving in Massachusetts began February 23rd. Fines will begin on April 1st at $100 for the first offense, $250 plus mandatory completion of a distracted driving educational program for the second offense, and they keep going from there. So, it is not like the seatbelt law when that took effect that the police wouldn't necessarily pull you over if they saw you without a seatbelt. This is considered a primary offense. So, the last day for early voting for the March 3 presidential primary is tomorrow, Friday, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. That's taking place at the Lakeville Police Station in the community room. The presidential primary election will take place on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, next week. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. All precincts will vote at Ted Williams Camp, also known as Loon Pond Lodge, 28 Precinct Street, Lakeville. And motor vehicle excise tax bills have been mailed and are due March 5th, 2020. Any public input? All right, moving right along. Agenda item number three. We're going to have a discussion on the wording and possibly take a vote for the April 6th potential ballot question regarding the Route 79 project. I'm going to ask Selectman LaCamera if he'd like to go over this. I think you have a little more familiarity with the wording and everything than I do.
Well, at the last meeting, we did a presentation with the Beta Group to talk about the Route 79 projects, and tried to impress that, you know, some of the information in the past was not presented properly, and the townspeople weren't given the opportunity, you know, to just vote on the one question. The ballot that was submitted before included not only 79, but multiple other projects that added up to $4 million. And, in my opinion, the ballot for the Route 79 should've stood on its own and given the people the opportunity, you know, to vote on it. And one of the reasons why it was, is being brought forward is that the cost, you know, for the town is $2.3 million, and there's a $10 million grant money to do all the construction, you know, of the project from the combination of federal government and state government. So that's a very, very significant grant, and I do think that the townspeople should get the opportunity to vote on it again, because if we don't by June 30th, then we're gonna lose this $10 million grant. So I think it's an opportunity that we need to consider, and that's kinda where we are. So basically, the question that would put on the April 6 ballot would basically fund our share of the project, which is $2.3 million.
I do know we've also discussed, it's actually on our agenda for today, putting together an information time where we can just have all the town residents come, and that, of course, would take place before the election. So we're gonna try to make that happen. We're gonna be discussing that towards the end of the meeting, but for right now, I will entertain a motion to approve the question as presented and place the following question on the April 6, 2020 election ballot, so...
Show the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we will just read the actual question. Question one, shall the town of Lakeville be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called "the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to fund the construction, installation, maintenance, improvement, repair, replacement, and/or relocation of rights of way, sidewalks, drainage, utilities, driveways, retaining walls, guardrails, slopes, grading, rounding, construction, landscaping, and other..." I can't say that. "...pertinences and/or facilities to enable the town to undertake the Route 79, also known as Myrick Street, Rhode Island Road rehabilitation project? And it will be a simple yes or no vote. That's our motion. All those in favor of placing this on the ballot? Aye. So, this will be going on the ballot. And again, towards closer to the end of the meeting, we'll be discussing an information time that we're trying to set up for that. Agenda item number four, we have, we had tabled this from the meeting on January 27th, so we're just sort of tying up a loose end here. This is to revisit and possibly vote on a letter for Northeast Alternatives for the Cannabis Control Commission. The Cannabis Control Commission is asking the Selectmen to affirm that Northeast Alternatives is either in or not in compliance with municipal bylaws or ordinances. Nate Darling has sent an email, which Tracy has printed out for us, stating that the current zoning allows for marijuana cultivation by special permit and is thus compliant. So, if the board agrees, I would entertain a motion pursuant to 935 CR 500 1021D. The Lakeville Board of Selectmen affirms that Northeast Alternatives is in compliance with municipal bylaws or ordinances and authorizes the chairman, or the town administrator, but the chairman's here right now, to sign the municipal response.
Go, second.
All those in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
And John, I guess you're the only one who can answer this question, is that the host agreement calls for not only cultivation, but retail and medical. So, is it my understanding that this application is only for cultivation?
That's all that they had asked for in the beginning, and it's only a cultivation, but perhaps they're here and they can speak to that, but it's a cultivation where they send their product to their other locations at this point in time, but you can certainly speak to that.
My name's Steve LeBelle from Northeast Alternatives. Yes, that is the, the plan is just to do cultivation at that facility.
Okay, so then in the very near future, we need to modify that agreement to eliminate retail and...
I don't think I would bother, because there's gonna be, there can be just as many addendums as deletions, and I don't think we wanna get snarled up. I think there's nine different things that could be technically voted on, whether they have delivery services, and I understand that it's just cultivating, going to other places, but they're allowed to do the other things if they would desire something.
What concerns me is that if we have a host agreement that says that it can do all three, then just like one host, one marijuana company came in, I don't know, a month or so ago and asked to change the name, you know, to do something else, and the same thing could happen here, not just, not just this agreement, but all the agreements could say, okay, we're gonna now do retail, but we're gonna do retail in some other place.
You'd need to write a host community agreement, and that's under the purview of the Selectmen.
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, is that, well, there is a host agreement, and the host agreement says cultivation, retail, and medical, all three, and his application is only for cultivation.
Right.
And he just, I think, I'm trying to put words in his mouth, but I think he just said he's only gonna do cultivation.
Right.
I haven't seen that agreement for a while, but...
Neither, neither have I.
But if memory serves me, I think that the intent of the wording is to allow us to cultivate for those uses, for medical and recreational. It's, I believe how it was spoken, how I've seen them worded in the past. So, it's not that we're gonna sell out of their retail or medical, but we're just cultivating product that can be retailed at other locations.
Okay, we have multiple ones here, okay? And some of them say recreational, cultivation, recreational, processing, product, marketing, manufacturing. So you manufacture, manufacturing products too?
Yes.
So...
Edibles, maybe.
Okay, so then the other one says, yours says, medical and recreational, cultivation, processing, product, manufacturing. But the agreement says that you can also sell recreational out of there, right?
I don't recall it. It's been a long time since I've seen...
I haven't read it for whenever, a year, oh wait.
Yeah, it's been quite a while.
I do believe this is the reason why, that we had tabled it the last time too, because there was some...
No, I think we tabled it the last time, because if we waited 60 days, it automatically became compliant with the state. They wished to accelerate it, that's why. We didn't table it, we simply chose not to respond to the state which made it compliant with the state after 60 days. They wanted to accelerate it, that's why, that's why they came back. So the motion should just stand as that.
Rita?
Rita Gabbett, if I remember correctly, those notices you received from the Cannabis Control Commission, that one is just for the, the first license. If they do have recreational, you'll have to approve or confirm that they're in the right district. That's all that is far, is are they zoned for what they're applying for?
No, it's not just zoning, it has to do, he's complied with all state and local regulations too, including permits.
But you'll get another one if they're approved for recreational, you'll get another...
So my point, Rita, is that then he can do all three. He's not just doing cultivation.
But you're just affirming that?
No, I'm asking a question about what the host agreement says.
I haven't read this recently. I mean, this was simply to say, is he compliant with municipal bylaws and ordinances? And that's all that was in front of us. You wanna talk about the host community agreement, we can have another meeting on it, but this was just to say, is he compliant with the municipal bylaws? That's all, and Nate said that he is.
Okay, I'm just, I was the one that asked to hold it up, because it showed, I didn't pick it up until the day before the meeting, which is normal, because the, the packet's not available until Friday afternoon, so I picked it up on Sunday, and I looked at this and I said, well, I don't understand that. And that's why I asked it to be pushed out to another date, so I could understand how it related, you know, to the host agreement. And so based upon what I understand right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's only cultivation?
Correct.
Okay, is that right?
That's right.
So you don't need recreational, you don't need medical?
Correct.
Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, so you won't have any objection if we change the host agreement to say that?
The only objection I would have is that I, I think, and I'm, you know, I'm just thinking out of the box here, is that that would probably have to go all through the CCC all over again and put us out, it could put us out another eight months.
I'm not asking you to change it right now, but I'm, I'm saying, and we just had a similar one that just did the same thing, that just said, oh, we're not gonna do retail anymore, we're only gonna do cultivation. So my concern is that from a town's perspective, is that somebody like yourself could say, well, I'm gonna sell this host agreement to somebody else to run retail somewhere else in town. Is that, that's correct, right? That could be done.
It's site-specific though.
It's site-specific.
No, but I mean if the...
He could sell it for, he could sell it for 310 Kenneth Welsh Drive only. He could not sell his license for a different address.
Correct.
That is 199 Kenneth Welsh. It's site-specific. And this is only to confirm that he's in compliance with municipal bylaws. The bylaw simply says it's allowed in an industrial zone. That's all it's because.
And our lease with the Kenneth Welsh Drive is specific to cultivation. There's no lease for any part of that building that we would have access to do retail.
Recreational or...
Right, he'd have to come back...
We'd have to go to the planning board and find parking and a retail...
Okay, so I think what we should do here is, I think we should just vote on this one thing, and then I do think that part of the original reason why, when the original, when we had put the freeze in place was to sort of evaluate the host community agreements that we already have, so that, I think we should be doing that, going down the line. Whether that's sooner or later, it's up to the board, but I think right now, we have a motion. Your point is noted.
Oh, I have another question.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yep, no, that's okay.
I just, the other question is, is that, you know, based upon this host agreement that you're gonna pay the town $25 per pound on adult shoots, recreational, and $15 a pound on, on medical, okay? I'm trying to understand, you know, what that means. Is that based upon just the plant? Is that based on products, or what is it based on?
That's based on anything that is sold out of that facility, wholesale out of that facility.
So is that anything that's, you know, manufactured?
Anything sold.
Anything sold.
So hypothetically, if there was 100 pounds sitting there that went, that never got sold, then there would be no fee associated with that. It's anything that is sold, that generates revenue, you get your...
But, you know, it says here per pound, but how does that work? I mean, if you're gonna sell wholesale marijuana to whatever, or you're selling something that you produce there, you know, as a product, right? Does that get weighed as $25 a pound, or how's that...
Speaking has to edibles.
Edibles, okay, does he have them?
To be honest with you, it's a great question. It's not spelt out in the agreement. The way the agreement looks, to me, is like it's speaking of flour, which would be the real, you know, the marijuana itself. We never thought about, and it's never come up before, about edibles. If we make edibles, how you weigh edibles.
Oh, I don't know, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, it's a great question.
You just said you don't understand it either.
I mean, it's not...
I'm not in the marijuana business.
Well, we've never had this come up before. This is the first location that is getting paid per pound.
Are all your other locations around a percentage?
The other locations, they only get paid for the actual medical retail or the recreational. Then they get their 3%.
Right, the only thing I've ever seen it referred to is the flowering plant. The state makes them batch them in 10-pound increments and test them in 10-pound flower increments. That is, you wouldn't wanna squeeze the plant and measure the oil by the pound or the elements by the pound.
I don't foresee at this point that we'll be doing much in edibles out of this location. We have another kitchen in Far River that does most of the, does all the edibles right now.
Okay, the other thing that, you know, I'd like to know is, what is the projected revenue for, for the first year on this? Because I don't think it matches what was given a long time ago.
I, I can't speak to that today, I don't have it in front of me. It was submitted when we applied for a host agreement.
But that's a long, long time ago, right?
Right.
So, I mean, you must have better numbers of how much it's gonna be growing at that facility and...
I don't have it with me, I'm sure we do back in the office, I just don't...
Okay, can you provide us with that information, please?
We have, we have that in our books.
John, it's old information.
But I don't think it's changed.
Certainly it's old information, he hasn't planted anything yet, but, and so, if we wanna talk about host community agreements and what he's doing, we should be. What's in front of us is, is he in compliance with municipal bylaws, and we didn't put a freeze on to review existing post-agreement agreements, we did it to put a moratorium on future ones. So, it's not to go back and rehash. If we want to, we should put it on the agenda and have people in if we so desire to.
I have asked to be on the agenda a couple of times, in a couple of meetings. You know, I asked, you know, about the fees and the legal fees, I still haven't gotten the answer, and that's nothing to do with this gentleman at all.
Right, right, so what's in front of us is, is he compliant with municipal bylaws.
Right, so why don't we do this?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I still have the floor, please.
Yep, absolutely.
I want you to know that I saved you a month for the special permit. I look at everything, and I looked at the plans, and the plan that your engineer submitted for 310, 10, 10 Kenneth Welsh Drive was wrong. And I looked at it and I said, this plan isn't right. So if it had gone to the, was it the Planning Board or the Board of Appeals, you would've been stopped right then because the plan wasn't right.
I appreciate that.
And so, you understand that I wasn't delaying anything, that I looked at that plan and I said, that plan is wrong. I got that plan changed, you know, through the Planning Board's administrative assistant, so you could have your meeting, so it had, would not have been delayed, so I just want you to know that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So, and I know you came into the office and you were complaining that this wasn't signed, so now you can approve it.
Okay. I do think there is questions though, that we would like to have answered, especially because in this particular case, some of the information is pretty, pretty old, and I think they're valid questions. I think right now, if we take action on this particular motion, I don't think that, Tracy, Lorraine, either one of you wanna correct me, John, or not, I don't think that prevents us from taking a look again at the host community agreement. Anyone? I know we're not in the council...
You can put on the agenda whatever you want to put on.
A future agenda, absolutely.
Yeah, you can put it on the agenda.
So, let's, Tracy make a note that, you know, would like to review the host community agreement, if we could do that going forward, just so we can, probably won't be in the next...
These are everyone's.
Theirs in particular, and then, or the board...
We'll single them up.
Well, the board will discuss it, so we're gonna put it on a future, I mean, it's not in the next two weeks, because we have so much going on. So, right now, we do have a motion on the table, so all those in favor of the sending the cannabis, approving the cannabis commission letter for Northeast Alternatives?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Can I ask one question though?
Yep.
As far as, you know, coming back and rewriting the host agreement, I don't, I understand your point about the recreational and that, which we have no intentions of doing that. However, though, I just don't want you to feel like we're trying to avoid anything, but we have spent a ton of money in this facility already, and...
Yep, no, I think...
We don't wanna revisit everything and change things.
Right, and, and to John's point, we wouldn't be signaling, singling any one person out, it's just, I think we just wanna look at all our host community agreements, so it wouldn't be...
Okay, that's understandable.
Not you in particular, but I think that this is a good time for us. I kinda wanted to do it this past summer, but, you know, that, I think I was in the minority, so...
We jumped in with two feet already, you know.
Yep, 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 okay.
Surely I think the first meeting would be with the attorneys.
Right.
Because they were signed under their purview.
Yep.
These are legal documents that are signed for a five-year term period.
Yep, but we just...
And these folks are, these folks and most folks are grandfathered for what you're doing in the future.
Yep.
You wanna reopen, it's, you need to go to the attorneys first.
Right, but I think things have changed, so, you know, I think it's just a feeling that, you know, some of the newer members on the board, and we have another upcoming election, so, you know, it'd be nice for the board to...
It's understandable, I understand.
Okay.
And then as far as this document that you're gonna eventually sign here, can we get a copy of it once it's signed?
Yep, sure, I think we have it, might have it with us, so...
Could I come in tomorrow and get a copy?
Yeah, that should be okay, right, Tracy?
Okay, thank you.
We're only open 8:12 tomorrow.
Ah, nice, huh? All right, thanks.
Okay, so, agenda item number five is, we have received a retirement letter from Michael Vickery. Michael Vickery of the Highway Department has submitted his letter of retirement to the board. He has worked for the town for 20 years, his retirement is effective March 31st, 2020. So I will entertain a motion to accept the retirement letter from Michael Vickery, effective March 31st, 2020.
Show the motion.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, at this point, we're gonna discuss trying to put together a public information meeting for the Route 79 project. So this is something that we've been doing for, you know, a few weeks now, trying to get this all together between us, Beta, who's the engineering firm working with us. I understand that March 11th at the high school is available, is that correct?
The high school's available for March 11th.
Okay, do we know what times?
Well, March 11th is the school day, so...
So it would be in the evening?
Evening meeting.
I thought, okay, I thought for some reason we were going with the weekend, but...
The 14th is a Saturday, but Beta's not available.
But Beta's not available on the weekend, okay. So, March 11th, does the board have any suggestions, what time? Do we wanna hover around 6:30? Earlier, later, anybody?
I'd say at least 7:00.
Okay, 7:00 o'clock, give everyone a chance to get there. My biggest concern would be making sure it's publicized. I know we have a couple of Lakeville Facebook town, well, not, we have the town page, but there's other pages, so maybe we can get together and figure out. We don't need to vote on that, correct? It's just an informational meeting. So we're gonna do March 11th at 7:00 PM. Mr. Day?
Hi, I was just gonna, based on what happened for the master plan meeting, where it was like there was two hours essentially scheduled, what I noticed at that meeting, which this I feel is gonna be similar to, by the end of those two hours, everybody was already packing up, putting information away. So I don't know what this meeting is going to be like, if it's gonna be like, here's our presentation, thanks, we're done, or more of an open house style. Even 7:00 o'clock, that's great, it's a little later, but people might not be able to get their toll a little later on, so if they still have the opportunity to come in, talk with some folks, get information, not feel like if I'm not there from 7:00 to 7:14, my chance is gone. This is kind of, I think, the one shot to get any information out, because otherwise it sounds like there's no other opportunity before that June 30th deadline.
Go ahead.
The plan would be that we'd probably do 20, 25-minute presentation, and then we'd open it up for discussion to anybody that had questions, and then either the town would answer it, or the engineer would answer the questions. So, most of it, most of the meeting would be about getting input from the community.
So it'd be front-loaded? So it would be front-loaded and then people hang around for a while.
I'd also like to be able to give people some kind of a printout, even if it's not every slide, but something that they can pick up on their way in. So if they review it, if they get there a few minutes late and they look at it, I, I don't even know what we have available that we could post ahead of time on the website.
Personally, I think if you did say it's going to be seven to nine or something, like, let's just make sure people are actually there till nine. So if stragglers come in, that the T is late, they don't get there at seven, seven fifteen, they've got a shot.
Yeah, I'm in no way, shape, or form want to rush it. I want people to get there and ask their questions, because this is the time that we're, we're allowing for it. So, um, I don't even want to say only seven to nine. If we run to nine-thirty, I want people's questions, you know, I don't know if we'll ask the moderator to step in or something, just to make sure people aren't asking the same question over and over again, keep people moving, but, um-
This, this won't be run by the moderator?
Someone acting like a moderator, whether that's Beta or someone else, you know, because it just kind of have the same questions over and over again. But I, my hope is that we can get most of this information on the website ahead of time, so that people can look at it, digest it, and come with questions. Not just see it for the first time and then go home and say, oh, I should have asked this, you know, because I think it's important. So we will make sure to sort of set up a format, presentation, discussion after, um, we need the visuals. All right. Any other comments on that information session?
Uh, yes, we, uh, the last meeting we discussed that we're going to send postcards to the people that live on seventy-nine.
Yep. That should help generate some direct abutters. Yes.
What a press release in the, in the bar, because that, some people still get that too.
They still do that, yep. Any other suggestions from the crowd? Could we advertise it online here? Okay. So we said March eleventh?
Uh, just, just one other suggestion, maybe-
Yep, yep.
Either Tracy or Lorraine can put together a brief poster, where we could put it in the town office, the library, the COA.
Okay.
The old library, you know, police station, so.
Yep. I think the point here is to try to get as many people, um, made aware that the meeting's going to take place, so that questions can be answered. Okay, um, let's see. Agenda item number seven. This is for budget meetings, pretty much just for the board to take a look at. Does anyone on the board think that anything is, as far as I'm concerned, I think we're going to run over a little bit, but, you know, everyone usually comes pretty armed with patience because it's the budget stuff. Um, I will say on Wednesday, because we do have a few more things that were canceled from the other night, that we're shifting to Wednesday, so Wednesday might be the longest of the three nights. Monday will probably be exactly as we see here, correct? Tracy, isn't that what we did? Okay. Um, Wednesday, we did add a few things. Thursday, we might have added one or two things because the same people we need to discuss, um, are going to be there anyways. So, anyone see any big problem with the schedule? Now's the time to talk. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda, item number eight. I guess along with our budget meetings, we can discuss anything about the FY twenty-one budget. I believe the budget books for the selectmen and the finance committee will be ready tomorrow by about three o'clock, I think. Um, are you, you're going to be there?
Mm-hmm.
Until?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock, okay.
If they, if the finance committee members are unable to get there by three, we'll make other arrangements with them.
Okay, so they can just contact you?
Yep, I'm already in touch with them.
Okay, all right, good.
How do you want to handle the school budget, which obviously is greater than sixty percent? Matter of fact, it's probably ninety percent of the dollars, extra dollars that are being spent this year as proposed. So can we have them down at a selectmen's meeting? I know they have it in a public forum.
Yep.
On that.
I'm not defer to-
Yeah, what was discussed, the school committee is, uh, in the process of reviewing the budgets over the next couple of meetings. And then on March nineteenth, there's going to be a June, uh, joint meeting between the, uh, both towns, uh, selectmen and, uh, finance committee to review the budget in detail.
So that's the fifteenth?
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
March?
March nineteenth.
So, selectmen and the school committee?
Finance committee.
And finance committee. Okay. Does that answer?
Well, right, that, that's at the school and a lot of people don't necessarily watch them. Sometimes, we'll, we'll see how that meeting goes.
Okay.
You know, we want to get out to the general public, whether we're satisfied or unsatisfied with the budget. And we talk about the town budgets, but we're really not talking about the school budget in front of the public.
Yep.
That we, that we cater to, if you will.
Yeah, I think, um, we can decide then when we want to talk about the actual school budget. If we just want to add it to, I think we have, um, we have the ninth as a meeting.
The ninth is sixteen.
And the thirtieth?
We have scheduled for the thirtieth, but I wasn't sure about that.
We have the ninth and the sixteenth?
We do.
There's no, there's no reason to discuss it before the nineteenth.
Right. Yeah, so if anything, it would be-
We want to do it before they, before they vote on their budget, if we want.
Which is, which is April eighth.
Yep. So it has to be before April eighth. So I guess on the nineteenth as a board, as long as we're going to be-
Sixteen.
The si, on the nineteenth.
We're doing the nine and the sixteen.
Yeah, but on the nineteenth at the meeting with all the people there.
Regional school committee.
The regional school, we'll, we'll make a decision there, because we'll be posted as a meeting, so, um, we'll decide there when, if we want to just have a separate meeting, just to discuss the school or not, the school budget. Okay. Anything else on the budget, meeting, on the budget right now? All right. The other old business we have is update, um, on the Freetown Special Town Meeting that was held February fifteenth, um, which was to do with the Lake District. That was, um, that we had some talk at our meeting a couple of weeks ago. I guess what happened at the Freetown meeting was, um, the vote was postponed after they had some discussion until Freetown's town meeting on June first, twenty twenty, which is the same day as our town meeting. Um, we have not received that petition, correct, still? So, um, so still, we don't really, we'll wait and see what happens with that. But they had postponed it, so they didn't get a vote. All right. Uh, agenda item number nine, any other business? Does anyone have any other business that they need to bring up?
Um, the only thing, uh, I don't know if we mentioned this, I don't think we mentioned it yet, but the Senator Rodericks and Representative Orla are coming to our meeting on March sixteenth.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes.
So, I mean, if anybody public, you know, is interested in attending our meeting, it is March, March sixteenth.
And that's our regular scheduled meeting. Next week is three, three meetings worth of, um, budget meetings. Um, I did see on some of the social media pages where people are saying, geez, why do I get so many notices on a, um, just in case anyone's wondering, the, some of them, you get multiple notices because there's multiple, um, meetings. Like the finance committee has posted for three meetings next week. So it's not actually a duplicate. Um, I think in the social media world, some people are thinking that they're duplicates. They're actually not. If you log on to the, if you click into them, you'll see that they're for different dates. And that'll be coming up pretty soon too with the selectmen, when we get our next three or four meetings all posted. So I did see that on social media. Someone was like, why do they send a message on the, they're actually different meetings. Um, and usually that's the case too, I would think, with the minutes. You know, sometimes when we approve multiple minutes, you may get multiple notifications that different minutes have been, have been posted.
That's here, um, there's a project going on now to update all the minutes on the website for all the various boards, committees, and commissions. So there will be a very large minute dump coming up over the next couple of months. So people should just be aware that it's not the same thing. You're just getting a lot of information.
Okay. But again, if anyone has any questions on those, please call selectmen's office and, you know, we can sort of clear that up. Um, agenda item number ten is, um, a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter thirty-eight, twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the firefighters' union, police union, laborers' union. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board, and the chair so declares, and not to return to open session, the chair declares, um, well- Second, we, that was second so moved.
We have in this meeting without the town administrator available?
We are.
Yep.
Why would we do that?
It's just an update.
You want an update or not, John?
Yeah, she was there, so it's an update.
We have a selectmen's meeting Monday.
Haven't we already posted? Okay, well-
If you don't want to do it, it's fine.
I know. Motion to go into executive session. We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Aye, baby and?
No.
You're a no?
No.
Okay. John's a no. Rich is an aye, I'm an aye.
Well, I'll withdraw my motion, but I, you know, I'm trying to keep the negotiations going forward here and we have meetings that have been set. And without input from the board, I can't do anything.
Yep, we've already posted Monday's meeting too.
Monday, we're supposed to do it Monday, we got canceled and now we're here. You know, Thursday, can't be doing, done on Monday. And I already have some meetings, you know, scheduled, you know, with, with the union. So if you don't want to talk about it, that's fine. I withdraw my motion.
Okay. So, meeting is, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'll second. All those in favor? Aye.